Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Do you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jenny, would you please take the role? Collins, here. Coyle, here. Gilbert, here. Lee, here. Yusef Avramson, Owen, here. Welcome, everyone. I want to first of all thank Dr. Pykel for the first meeting today. Welcome to the table. And also, I want to thank Paula Vessler, longtime board member, for being here, who is no longer a board member, unfortunately. But we wanted to take a few minutes to give her a little bit of recognition. So I'm going to start with Ken.
And before I do that, I also want to note for the record that tonight is a historic moment, not just because Paula's here with us, but it represents the first time in the history of District 207 in which a majority of our high school principals added board meeting were female. That's never happened. So I love the historic moments. But that said, I want to take a minute just to recognize Paula, who's been with us for many years, many important years in the history of District 207. While a lot of people will focus on the incredible transformations that are happening to our buildings in terms of their physical orientation to how we do learning and updating all of the mechanical and electrical systems, and those have been tremendous and I think will leave a legacy for decades in this district. There are also a number of really, really important things that have happened during Paula's time here, and they wouldn't have happened, I think, without her leadership. And I'm going to just name a few. During Paula's time here, we really had a focused effort to improve our commitment to equity and the mental health support for our students. Those were always top-of-mind issues for Paula. She was instrumental in supporting us to open up access to our most reduced courses for all of our students. It's an equity issue. It's a foundational equity issue. She's been here, serving on this board when we launched, perhaps, one of the only all-in coaching models in the country, launched, to my knowledge, the only all-in individual career planning program in the country. I can say personally, working through the pandemic with her is something I think we'll never forget. But truly, few individuals could have stepped up in that moment and performed more adorably than Paula did. In my 37 years in education, it is easily the most stressful situation that I've ever seen, frankly, a district, but in particular, the Board of Education put through. Paula was excellent to work with, even during the most polarizing of moments, when we had to make a decision, knowing full well that that decision was going to anger a significant number of citizens. Paula always listened to reason, logic, science, and made a courageous decision, and that helped us as a district leadership team really do our job as innately and as effectively as we possibly could. And so with that, all of those things, all of those many things, I want to just say, the entire District 207 community really owes Paula and her credit for her service. The service of board members is often easily overlooked, and it's taken for granted in a district like 207, in which we've been able to do some pretty significant things on behalf of students that have taken courage and leadership from the Board of Education. The service to our community of board members, while not always as highly noted as some other public servants, I think is way more important in terms of the legacy of what it means to a community and what it does for the students, that we are privileged to serve in this district. So Paula, thank you on behalf of our district leadership. Thank you so much. Paula, your words. You want to summarize it?
Yeah, well, I couldn't have said it better. I'm not going to even try and rephrase that. But we do have a resolution, Paula, and I'd like to read it. Whereas Ms. Paula Vessler was appointed to the Board of Education in April 2014, elected in April 2015, and re-elected in April 2019, thereby serving eight years during two terms, and three of those years as president. Whereas Ms. Vessler has served as a member of the Finance, Community Relations, Employer Relations, Education Policy, Buildings and Grounds, and Insurance committees, and served on the District 207 School-Based Health Center, Illinois Association of School Boards Assembly Delegate, Illinois Association of School Boards Division of Governing Board, Education Research and Development Representative, and Open Community College Alliance for Lifelong Learning Representative. Whereas Ms. Vessler is leaving the Board of Education, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education of Main Township High School, District 207, express sincere appreciation and gratitude to Ms. Paula Vessler and recognize and mentor for her contributions to good school-community relations, her insight and guidance related to instructional efforts to improve student performance, her concern for the welfare of staff, students, and families, and her tireless efforts to promote and recognize student achievement at each of the high schools. This is signed by all of the members of the Board of Education. So, thanks, everyone. Thank you so much. Well, I have a 30-minute PowerPoint. Before you start that, I just want to, I wanted to give the board members an opportunity to see.
You are going to make me cry, aren't you?
Well, I'm going to start, let me start myself by saying, when you finished your presidency, I had some words for you at that time about your brand grace and your strength during those three really difficult years. And everything Ken said is true all the way through. Your leadership at that time was just, for all of us, we're very grateful for that. But you also served before that for many years. And I think it's really important, you know, when people serve on the board, that we recognize the, you know, the normal things that we do as board members, and how we have to stay focused, and how we have to be at the meetings we're supposed to be at, and pay attention. And you were very good at that, Paula, always. So thank you for all of that service. Your vice president, while you were board president, couldn't be here today, but she sent some words, and so I'm going to read those. I'm so sorry I'm not able to be there in person, but I want to thank Paula for her leadership. As board president, she led with grace and confidence. As one of the newest board members, her mentorship and guidance has meant so much to me. I was fortunate to learn from and to serve with her. Her commitment and love for the community inspires me to continue that great work. Best of luck to you, Paula. So I'll say that for you. Anybody else?
I think that Ken. Well, it truly has been a many wonderful years, serving together after our reelection. And during these times, all these times, to remember, it has been a truly challenging years. And you have truly shown a leadership, working as a whole team together, and we really overcome on good of the students and good of the district as well. So it has been a truly a wonderful experience, working together with you and serving the board together with you, and really gratefully appreciate your leadership and so on. And then really overcoming and handling all the despite hardships that we've been through. And we, as a board members, we really spent a lot of time, late hours, really tried to solve the best as we could on good of the community, for the good of the school district. And you truly have shown that leadership. So I wish you all the best of everything, good luck, enjoy it, spend a lot of great times traveling, and, you know, stay healthy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
So I'm going to miss you. I know we're all going to miss you. You were my guidepost when I first became a member of the board, and then when you became president, navigating that crazy COVID storm. You did it with courage and dignity. You are, you're the best leader, because you're a compassionate leader and you're an empathetic leader. Throughout everything, you allow, you allow all voices to be heard, even when people disagree, you're able to calm. We had, we had one board meeting that I remember vividly, where you kept everyone in the right place. And it could have gone south, could have gone south many times, but with your leadership, it did not. And we are, because of you, this district is thriving and in a fantastic place. So wish you well, but good luck.
Thank you so much. You've been such a wonderful bridge as I came on as a board member, but so generous with your time and your leadership. You're always just one text or phone call away. You are so wise, you're a great listener, but you're also willing to give great advice. And, you know, you just put so much energy into everything you do, and it's so genuine and caring. And you really have so many amazing human qualities, and I wish you well in your next chapter. Thank you.
So, everybody here said, I want to add to everything they said. But I wanted to say, you know, I've had the privilege of knowing you as a mom, as well as a school board member. And so I know you've worked your butt off for District 207 in many, many ways, you know, whether it was hotcakes, or water polo team, or, you know, all of the stuff you did for the School-Based Healthcare Center when you were at, with every kid. And, oh, I mean, everywhere I was with you, you were like, how can we help? You know, and I was like, let's get out of here. You were like, wait, where can we help? You were always, you were always there. And I just want to thank you so much, Paula, because not only have you given what everybody says to the school board, and I agree with that, but you've given in so many areas to 207 and to Park Ridge, but to, but to 207, you know, for all of our kids, you know, in Des Plaines and Niles, and everywhere in Park Ridge. And I, I feel like, you know, it's going to be very, very hard to replace you. And I don't think we'll do, as, you know, we'll find you, but hopefully we'll be able to go on and carry the things that you started, and do we proud of you. But thank you, thank you, Paula. And I'm going to miss you a lot.
I'm still here, so everyone can stay in touch with me. Is there any, can I say some words?
Yes.
I'm going to stand up, because you all deserve the respect for me to stand up, because it has been an absolute honor and privilege to serve with all of you, the board, and all of the administration. You have all excelled and been there, and we've really been through the trenches. It's been not always easy. It's been often hard, but maybe worthwhile, it is very hard. And that's what I feel here, because it's my community. I grew up here, we've lived here, we've grown up here our entire lives. We chose this community, raised our family, because of the big part, because of the district excellence, not only 64, but 207. When I was really reflecting on my time here in Solomon, I'm sure, saw that, when I shared it in the press release or my post, three things really rose to the top in the last eight years. Everything with the buildings, and everything, all the excellence, the district goes with excellence, that went into fueling that our buildings need to match that excellence, right? So all of this, it's been quite a journey. I look at Mary, she added just so much to it. But such a journey of the schools, and from the input of the principals on down through this course, sitting through so many meetings and interviewing, getting, just, I'm so excited about that. And when everything finally found out, I want to be on the A-list invite back. The second thing was getting through the pandemic, but not only getting through the pandemic, but getting through the stability, decency, respect, professionalism. And I do think we were a model for that, and I do think we strive to put in the extra time for that. And for that, I am so proud of you, and I want to do, again, and so honored to have done, taken that journey with you. And then finally, the commitment to mental health, what you said, the mental health and diversity, equity, inclusion, of which, of course, that's a journey that everyone can keep improving on. And the commitment is here, and I'm just so proud of that, and I think we have to continue it. And so with that, I know that you're a great hands-on board, and I thank Paula for taking back the presidency this year. I think she has been an excellent deputy, and I think your board is excellent, you're all excellent. And I do think you will find the right person for the next stage in the journey for 207. Good leadership is knowing when to leave, to knowing when to transition, and to knowing when it's time for the next chapter. And I feel that this is correct, this will, and I know what's going to be in the game, and I know you're all going to be excellent, and you'll be okay. And I want to hear a lot of it, and all your excellence. All of you know that I always use quotes for humor, and I'm going to end with one of my favorite poems from Ralph Waldo Emerson. What is it to succeed? To laugh often and much, to win the respect and intelligence of people and the affection of children, to appreciate beauty, to find the best in others, to leave the world a bit better, whether by a healthy child, a garden patch, or a routine social condition, to even know even one life has breathed easier because you have lived. This is to have succeeded. You have all succeeded, and I look forward to watching your continued success. Thank you for letting me be a part of it. It's been an honor to serve with you, to serve our community. Thank you. I might. So I don't, yeah. Oh, thank you, Jen. Always a gentleman. Thank you. Thank you. I'll talk to you all soon. Stay in touch, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you've done your updates. Are there any other updates before? Can I just mention, just one thing, on Saturday, the students from Maney's, Elder Power Wash, to Benedict Highland Park Schools, and Highland Park, you know, those of those that have been coming. And I was so, I was so happy to see that, only because school has even started. And yet, the kids reached out to Chris and Evan, and, right, the teachers, Chris, and I don't remember the last name. Evan, and, go ahead. Chris Peters. And they were there on a Saturday, giving their time. And it was just, it was our coaching team, and I just wanted to say how proud I am of our kids across the board, that they, you know, just the fact that they took that initiative themselves, and were out there on a Saturday before school starts. You know, I think we should applaud our kids.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, any other updates for board members? Are there any public comments? So we'll move along to the Finance Committee. I'm doing Linda.
Sure. So the Finance Committee was held on July 18th, this year. Members present were myself, Paula Vessler. Meeting stopped at 5:00 PM. There were no public comments. We did review the tentative budget. Assistant Superintendent for Business made a review of it, and it went on public display on July 1st, 2022. We go of a surplus of $432,000, which includes transfers worth of $2 million of revenue and taxing, which will be going back to the taxpayers. On the revenue side, property taxes are projected to increase by $6 million, along with the state revenue budget to increase by 12%. Corporate personal property replacement taxes are projected to increase by 1.4 million due to increased corporate profits. The district has kept salaries close to CPI, and benefit costs have remained flat. Investment income is budgeted to increase by 1.8 million, and the Cares Act money will be decreasing. The district reduced the student resource fees and eliminated individual course fees by reducing revenue by 500,000, thereby reducing revenue by 500,000. The tentative budget will go to the board for approval on August 1st. A public hearing will be held. Is that true? Going to, that's what I thought. Okay, that's incorrect. Yeah. So a public hearing will be held on August 15th. Allow me for questions or comments. Final budget will be adopted on, is that number six?
Yeah, that's, you can leave these minutes as they are, because they do reflect what was spoken in the meeting.
Thank you. Special, we also discussed the special loan program. The district provides annually participate in special loan program, which may versus the district for military providers, students in the amount of 35,000 to 45,000 in return. The district reduces the cost of bill by a mountain of verse in order to encourage under competition. We've also got a property tax update. The district, in partnership with other districts, continues to successfully participate in intervening in property tax appeals boards and circuit court, and recently began to intervene in cases that the board every year level. A number of agreements have recently been reached with hotel and retail space, looking for assessment relief due to substantial vacancies. Property tax bills may not be ready until December, but the district's fund balance should cover the temporary revenue shortage resulting from the delay. We also discussed technology contracts, and we played as a memo which summarized all the technology contracts, and we will discuss them today, and those. Meeting was adjourned at 5:25 PM.
Okay. Moving on to Buildings and Grounds Committee update and construction. Carrie, can you carry it?
Yes. The meeting on Buildings and Grounds was called to order on July 18th at 5:25. Members present, myself, Paula Vessler, and Jen Mead. And there were no public comments. Dave Alm, Director of Buildings and Grounds, stated committee noting all projects are paid from the Health, Life, Safety, and Operations and Maintenance funds for summer projects. All projects are on schedule and looking good. Weather has not had an impact on the progress of roof replacement. Main South Stadium track will be completed on time. Concrete repairs are being done on all three schools. Then there was an update on Main East Fieldhouse. Completion of the Fieldhouse floor will be delayed at Main East until November, and will impact boys' volleyball and physical education classes. Alternative locations have been arranged so as not to interrupt classes and competition. The existing asphalt floor must be removed, and concrete will be poured in its place. Bids will be opened shortly and awarded at the August 15th Special Board meeting. Members Vessler and Gilbert praised and thanked the team for their impressive work on all the projects. Next was the construction update. Pepper Construction provided a construction update. All schools are progressing, and while there may be a delay on some minor items, there are no concerns about being able to open schools. As with fall construction projects, the district is seeing a shortage in certain labor trades and laundry times on specific products. Main West construction is scheduled to be completed this fall, while Main East and Main South will have another summer of construction. There being no further business, we will adjourn the meeting at 6:02 PM.
Mary, would you want to go over the, please?
Sure.
The summer project?
Yes. Included is what we discussed at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. It talks about, there were big projects in the stadium track and the concrete, so just Member Collins provided a really nice summary of those projects as well.
Moving along to the monthly status of finances.
In your board packet are the May and June financial reports. The June financial report, it's that time of year where we are in the quasi-finalized stage of things, because as we speak, we're going through the audit and converting our reporting from a cash basis to a full accrual basis of reporting. So as you look at the both revenues and expenditures, they may not accurately reflect what they will reflect here at home, because we first reverse bunch entries, and then we have to put all the April entries. I will take any questions that anybody has on either the May or June financial report.
Anything? Property tax update?
Yeah, as discussed in the minutes to the Finance Committee meeting, a property tax update was discussed, in addition to providing kind of a status on which properties we are intervening, at which level, both the property tax field board, Circuit Court level, or the Board of Review level. It's unfortunate this year that property tax bills are going to be so late. We are fortunate that we have the fund balance to cover our cash flow from now until the time that those bills will become due. Many, many entities do not. While Cook County is offering a program to help borrow money, we would not be eligible because it's a lease-based program, and they will run out of money well before they would get to districts at our level. I'll take any questions that anybody has. I attached the full forensic report, because I think they do a nice job each year, kind of summarizing each area and where properties are within those areas.
And we have an article in there on recent verifications being made.
Correct. I included that, and I think I have the article, so that stayed a nice message.
All right. Right. I have a question on property taxes. Is there a special allocation, I mean, as you know, as you know, in Park Ridge, there has been discussion about having the two marijuana dispensaries within the compound of Park Ridge, and the second one looks like it has received a go-ahead. So is there a special tax allocation for schools from the marijuana tax income?
Not that I am aware of, and I think I would be aware of it. I think that they, I mean, for our purposes, whatever property taxes they would pay, that's their tax allocation, and then any kind of sales tax and state taxes go directly to the state.
I didn't know if there was any special, I've never heard anything. I think one. Yeah, I just read that. Anybody else? Thank you. Okay, Sean is not here, but I don't think he knows anything to go over, so we'll, yes, and Ken, you've got the updated for you?
Just one, and it's in the process of being responded to.
Okay. Moving on to our action items. I have a motion on item, this is the consent agenda, item 6A through G.
Flipo.
Aye. Take the role. Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Can I have a motion on approval of tentative budget, item 7? A motion. Second. Do we need to resist?
So, no, no, this is not the, so, it's just a tentative budget. We adopted in August because we don't have a July meeting. So then, you know, as stated earlier, it's been on display since July 1st. The difference that you will see between this budget and next month are all of the changes that we're making for primarily grants, some additional staffing, and hopefully some of the state allocations will come out, and we can update those as well. But this is kind of what we do every year. It's a tentative form, little changes that we are doing, the public hearing at the Special Board meeting on the 15th. And that allows us to receive any community comments before the board adopts the final budget.
And this executive, everything is put on display?
Everything is put on display, the full budget in your board packet, and what is in your board packet is just the executive summary. In late June, you received an electronic version, and you might have also received , I think, the full agenda as well, the full budget. But it's rather lengthy, so I don't, I'm happy at all with the board.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Jenny, would you take the role, walking to the board? Lee?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
I have a motion on item 8. This is a agreement of the Maine High School Patty Association.
So.
Thank you. Ken, you want to?
Yes. This is what we've been doing for about a decade. It's just a requirement for them to use the few, I would say, benefits that get, that have been associated with the district. So this is, actually, we did this agreement a number of years ago, and we're, perhaps, we're still here. Big, we have to give a big shout-out to Jenny for the Have to give a big shout out to Jenny because she has always chased this down every year. She was in here at the last minute.
And giving signatures.
Yeah, I get all the signatures, so... But this is something we do every year, and we cannot let them start operating their program without this.
Any questions? Jenny, would you take the roll? Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Hey, do I have a motion on item nine A? Second. This is... Kate, since yours is R and G's consultant, is it...
Yeah, so R and G we've used in previous years, and we're looking to continue that contract. They provide two different services. They provide our Medicaid billing for families that consent to that, for students who receive special education services and have a related service. And we give four point five percent of the money that they help us get back from Medicaid. And then the second part of it is that our related service providers have to log all the times in which they meet with students, and that's a legal requirement. And so, they provide the system in which our students... Or, I mean, our staff log that information to track over time. There's no increase from the price from last year. The cost has remained the same.
So, would the R and G consultant will work on behalf of us, our district, to communicate with the insurance companies?
So, what they do is they submit for Medicaid, the students who are Medicaid eligible. So, yes, they will take the students who all are Medicaid eligible, and they do all of the paperwork and submission on the insurance and to in order for us to recoup that money.
So, would these students or the parents, when they have some inquiry questions or concerns or anything, they can just reach out to R and G consultant maybe to...
No, they would contact us. They do give us a consent before we submit for this. And yet, if they have questions, they just ask us about them. But it's... They don't... None of it gets impacted by them. It's the school district getting reimbursed for the services that we're providing because services like social workers, psychologists, speech and language therapists, occupational therapy, and physical therapy are considered medical type services and therapies.
Any additional questions? There are... Can you take the roll? Gilbert?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on item nine D, one through twelve? And I will go through them. Second. Okay. So, I think this is done.
Yeah. So, item one is our Microsoft licenses, and what that does is enables us to use our... The stuff in the background, I guess, that makes everything else work. So, it's our server infrastructure, our database infrastructure, allows us to have all those licenses, plus it provides the licenses for staff to be able to use Microsoft applications. Any questions about that? Second is computer information concepts. They are the organization that we buy our student information system from, sort of, in a campus. They also are the organization that sells us Taplow, which we use for a lot of our advanced data reporting functions and also our dashboard functions. So, it's a pretty central item.
Questions on that?
So, this one says a three-year contract with the one with the CDW from Microsoft. Is that a one-year contract?
Yeah, it's an annual.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on campus and tablet? Item three, Skyward?
Skyward is our financial system, which I'm sure everybody's familiar with. It essentially allows us to do our finances, but it's also our HR information system.
Okay. Any questions on that? Item four, GoGuardian?
So, GoGuardian is a new task or classroom management system that we're adopting this year. It's replacing HAPARA. The reason why we're replacing HAPARA is there was a lot of staff who were less than happy with HAPARA. So, we did have some staff pilot work with building administrators to make a decision to go to GoGuardian. And the benefit is too that GoGuardian is less expensive than HAPARA.
This is a common with Patrick?
That's a...
Are they located in the maybe state of Illinois or is it nationwide?
I think they're national. I mean, GoGuardian is... They're becoming a fairly big player in the market.
And then like Skyward or CIC, are they maybe from state of Illinois again or just nationwide again?
Yeah, they're nationwide, yeah.
And so, do you give all staff a tutorial on how to use this one? If they like the HAPARA, will they be instructed on how to use this one? So, hopefully, they feel... Is there a better tool for the classroom?
Yeah, we too have Greg, right? He's our instructional technology specialist. Greg's been working... He's been working quite a bit to get these items together, and he's also going to be available in the school's work and staff.
CDW?
So, this is for Google Workspace. As you may or may not be aware, Google actually started charging last year for their services. So, and that was associated with the adoption of Google Meet, but it also reflects their need to pay more for the storage on the back end. So, they started that thirty thousand dollar charge on students.
Any questions on that? Okay, the next one is Remind One-on-One?
So, Remind One-on-One is a mass communication tool. So, teachers can use it to communicate with their students, parents, that sort of thing. Administrators can use it too to communicate with the wider community.
Any questions on that? Item seven?
So, Centegra supports our Citrix remote access tool. What that does is allow staff to access systems that they would normally only have access to while they're at school. It also allows our students to be able to access applications that they're using in CTE classes, in advanced drafting applications. So, source tools will use Citrix to make that available.
And this is... Is this also a one-year?
Yes.
Item eight is Okta?
Okta. Okta's an... It's an identity management system. The charge this year reflects partially the implementation cost of it. So, next year, it'll be down to twenty-four thousand rather than it is this year. Okta allows us to better manage our staff. And let me give you an example of that. Currently, we have probably eight thousand users in our Google tenant, but it also... I get a notification from Google monthly saying we've got over twenty thousand. So, the problem is, is that we haven't done a very good job of managing identities, and there's a couple of problems. Then, first of all, when staff join us, we sometimes struggle to get them all the access they need to all the systems they need. And that's a reflection of just the manual nature of it. It's, you know, it just happens. Importantly, when staff leaves, we want to make sure that we shut off their access instantly so that we don't have to worry about staff accessing systems that they shouldn't be accessing anymore. So, that's why this Okta tool comes around.
This is new? This is a new one?
This is...
So, is that why we have twenty thousand showing access?
It'd be twenty-four thousand. I'm sorry.
Because we didn't... Did I understand you right that there were... We have eight thousand, or then you said twenty thousand show access to it? Is that why we have the twenty thousand is because we don't take them out of the system?
We've done a poor job of doing it in the past, and I'll own that as much as anybody. So, yeah, we need to point that out.
And so, the other program didn't allow us to do that, or is it...
We didn't have the program.
Didn't have it. It was all manual? This program, the function of the rule is just to identify people who should no longer be present and to remove them?
That's a part of it. It's really more about what we call role-based access control. So, what that means is we want to make sure that everybody's got access to what they need to do their jobs and not they won't. So, that's... In organizations, even in large organizations, there becomes this creep of privileges that happen with users, and we want to make sure that we don't have that. Okta will help us with that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on that? Item nine, frontline technologies?
So, frontline is our HR recruiting system. It's something George uses quite a bit to post jobs and respond to job posts. We're also adopting it this year. It's a tool that will help us track and provide opportunities for professional development. So, it's wanting to be a much better tool than we use for the rest.
Is this also a one-year?
Yes.
Are any of these... I mean, you know, obviously, George's using this in the director's meeting, and it's really a very advantaged negotiating for longer terms.
We did negotiate bigger terms. So, I've had a year of...
Oh, so this is part of the year?
This is part.
So, we're... And we're approving it. Probably.
We already approved it, yeah.
Any questions on that? Item ten, Gale?
So, Gale's our library databases. What's the databases that we use online to help students perform?
Any questions on that? And then item eleven, Formative?
Formative is an assessment tool. So, it's a tool that we use to be able to assess students.
And then, I know this is a little bit different. This is purchase of projectors on blood work. I guess we're buying those from blood work?
We are. They're retiring these projectors. They're giving it to us at a really good price, and obviously, we have needs for them. So, it really makes a lot of sense.
They've used them. They're not... Did they buy too many?
I think they said they're new in the box.
Yeah.
Oh, so they are, so...
Yeah. They're brand new. They're laser projectors, so they are the latest and greatest.
So, okay, so that was my question. If they're retiring them, is the technology still good? Were we going to buy these anyway?
Yeah, yeah. We were going to buy.
These are the identical ones we were going to buy for the price. Now, we're just getting rid of this now.
Well, good chance.
They pitched the Maryland District.
Well, I like that they're new in the box. Okay. There are a lot to...
How do you base... Is this like something that schools do?
Yeah, so, well, so I got an email from the business manager and said, anybody want these projectors? I said, I knew we were buying projectors, and I knew we were buying short throws. So, I was like, hey, are these the ones we're buying? He said, yeah. And then they contacted and said, we'll take them off. We'll take them guys.
First one is... Okay? Thank you, John. We can now vote on all of those. Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Now, just very quickly, now related to... I know it's not really needed necessarily, and we've been doing this, and some of the new contract as well, but I'm always interested that if, when possible, I don't... We don't have a jurisdiction or responsibility to deal in contract or purchase this with them just B-to-B with outside of state of Illinois or... But I prefer to see if, when possible, if we can deal with B-to-B with the state of Illinois, maybe locally if that's possible. You know, however that fits. And I hope that you as a purchasing leaders, authorizing person to continue consider, and if we can find locals with the state of Illinois and so on, to, you know, move it forward.
Yeah, I did get the opportunity to mention CDW's actually based in Birmingham, so...
We ready to go? Okay. The next one is the consulting services with Corey LLC, which we've done before. Sean is not here.
I'm trying to remember what every places.
Corey? Go ahead.
Oh, that is...
She provides...
This is...
Professional development to the staff.
Yeah.
In the area that could be...
She... And she's been doing it for four years for us. Two or three years.
Doing overtime for... What she's done is changing somewhat. We understand that.
Yeah, it's a whole area.
Okay. Any questions on that? We do have the actual agreement on that. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion on item V. And we already had it discussed. Any other questions? Do you not have it, Carrie?
The numbers.
Yeah. It's at the back of...
I got it.
Okay. There are any questions? We take the roll? Lee?
Aye.
Gilbert?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on item nine D, the amended agreement with Athletico?
We currently have a five-year agreement with Athletico. They provide an assistant trainer at each of the schools and then a floating trainer position that floats between all three schools. They have been unable... Their trainer at South has left, and they've been unable to find a replacement for that position. Therefore, under the contract, they are giving us this notice of inability to perform. Once we were notified of this, George and I have worked together on posting our own assistant trainer position for South because we want to make sure we have trainer coverage that will keep the floater. And Athletico will also try and fill in with, as needed, people, you know, someone who will take one or two shifts a week as fall sports start. The move from the funding of an athletic trainer through Athletico to the district is about fifty thousand dollars per position additional. So, we believe that we will incur about fifty thousand dollars more by doing this. I think the landscape of the athletic training programs through colleges is what is moving for the shortage as well as an increased need for them in the athletic field. So, we would anticipate that this may or may not go... I mean, more of the schools, we may be getting more of the inability to perform notice. This is our last year of the five-year contract with Athletico. So, I know we'll be evaluating whether or not we want to continue to do an RFP for assistant training services or whether we want to bring that in. I would say the majority of schools in this area have the model we have, where they have some full-time staff that owns the district, and they contract with a provider, and that's done because the provider's greatly discount the cost of that staff because they know that they can get business for rehab, physical therapy from the campus. So, it's... We're in a little bit of a gray area. We are in a little bit of a gray area. We are working closely with Athletico. They will continue to look for someone, and should they find them before we find them, then we, you know, will rescind this. If we find a replacement, then we will then bring in another contract amendment to the board, which amends the dollar value of the athletic contract as well.
And if we do find someone to hire, I guess we could help. Would that be like, we have that for a one-year term or will we...
So, they would be a support staff employee, making them at-will, subject to the notifications of annual dismissal. We... I don't think we would offer them a one, you know... I think we're probably committing to do this at South until such time that we find a program that could fulfill it.
So, we don't want to be short trainers?
Correct.
I think it makes sense to do this, so...
Is it an hourly? Is that how you're going to post it? Or is it...
No, it's going to be an annual position, a salary position, full-time with benefits. They work six point six hours a day for six days during the school year, and it's a permanent position because they do work on Saturday as well.
Is there a... Do they have to be certified?
They have to be certified, and they have to... The athletic... Part of the issue with the athletic training program is going to a master's program through school. So, it is one of the lower end of payment for a program that requires a master's.
And is it certified, not education certified, but...
No, it is... It's just like OT or PT. It is a different certification. It is not an educational program of study. They would be an I am a staff employee, support staff.
Like our full-time people?
Correct.
It's questionable whether the current model would be sustainable. It's questionable whether the current model will be sustainable, but we, we're just.
Okay. Thank you. You did that so right, kind of long, but maybe you can take that from. Um, okay, any other questions? You take your role. Kilber?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Collins?
Aye.
Can I have a motion on item 10A and 10B? A motion. Okay. Katie, Michael, I know these are, we do this every year, but would you just?
Yep, absolutely. So, um, item A, North Cook, um, as I shared in the Friday note, I did try to give you a little bit of a description of the different programs, because they have expanded. So in years past, we have had come and asked the board to approve a contract for us to be able to place students there for their safe schools program, and that's for students who have significant disciplinary infractions, um, that could be considered expellable offenses, um, and so we want to obviously continue that, and that's a per-day cost, um, for every day a student is there. So this is no different than in years past, that part of it, that we're hoping to continue. Um, the other intergovernmental agreements are for what are called alternative learning opportunity programs, and they have two more traditional programs, we're only charged if we use them. Um, we've only ever had one student use one of their traditional ALOT programs, um, in recent years, um, because we are able to serve most of our students within the district, um, but it is great to have that just in case we do have a student who does have unique needs, if you don't sign it upfront, then you can't, um, get those supports should you need it, um, for a student who is in general education who does not meet the disciplinary, um, code violations to go for safe schools. And then, so all three of those, there's no upfront costs, it's whether or not a student is placed there. Um, last year we had four students, um, placed in North Cook for safe schools, just to give you an idea, they were not there for the duration of the year, it was proportion of the year. Um, the last is a new program, um, and actually there's a, a school district Westport, it was run something similar to this for several years, and it's highly successful, and this is called the Student Advocacy ALOT Program, um, and this is a pilot for North Cook, they've been trying to do something like this for several years, there's nothing like this in this area, and what they do is they take that alternative learning opportunity program, and they put it in our school, so instead of sending our students outside of our buildings, they're able to help support at a tier-three level, those students who are really struggling and need additional support, provide them some of that support in our schools. Um, and so we have, and what we're asking the board to do is to partner, so that we can provide them at East and West for this upcoming school year. The nice thing about it is it is a 50% cost for the first year, so we split the cost with North Cook and the intermediate service center, and then up to the second year, it could be up to fully, like, no funds for us, uh, we wouldn't have to pay anything for year two, up two, so there could be a cost, it just could be up to that. Um, you know, knowing that our buildings have a lot of students, you know, especially coming out of COVID, that there are a lot of needs, this is another way that we can help support our staff, um, and our students, um, and being able to do it within our building as opposed to sending them outside of our building, which is something that I know that we all value.
So.
So I can entertain questions, because I'm sure there are some.
And I'd like to say a couple more, too, because I actually, we, we were lined up to get this program in East, and Kevin from the regional office, Evanston had the other program, they dropped out, and they reached out to hear if guys are interested in the second, so Katie and I and Sean spent a lot of time talking about, you know, this and moving on, and, but, but at the end of the day, I think, um, and I do, too, that, that we thought, you know, it's a resource in the building, you've heard us talk about, you know, we've had a little bit of a dropout, um, completion, uh, issue on time at all three of our buildings, but more pronounced in East and West, and just attendance issue, and this gives us a point person in the building where, you know, if you do a wellness check and follow up on a student, it'll be a small number of students, but this will give us a resource, so for that reason, we're gonna get the only two grants for this in North Cook, none of the other high schools were even interested in, in raising their hand for this, and so I think it's worth, you know, uh, supporting and seeing how it goes. Hopefully they'll be able to integrate with the other support systems that we've got, and it's going to be successful, but as Katie said, West Cook's been around this for a number of years, and schools that have challenges like ours, and some that have challenges well beyond ours, and their data is that this program is going to really succeed.
And, and who dropped out, did you say?
Evanston.
You know why?
They just, they have a new superintendent, new principal, and they just feel like they could transition into it this year.
And are we anticipating, um, this is another one where if we need it, it will be there?
So this is not a full cost for the district.
So this is. So total, it's about $114,000 for the two buildings, and that's for four staff members,
so it'd be two, um, staff at East and two staff at West, support staff, um, that could go and do home visits, that we provide at tier-three, very intensive support. We currently have tier-three services, but, um, they are extremely intensive, and so the amount of time it takes, you really need people to help carry that load, and this would be a good partnership to be able to do that, help carry that load, provide those intensive services.
We know we have to be. Yes. Okay. So, can I have a question for, so tier-three, is that, I thought that was where they were really, um, sick and had to be, which is the ones that they're sick and you do the whole house?
Homebound.
You're thinking of homebound services.
Okay, I'm thinking, is that, was, isn't that in tier two?
No, that's, that's like a thing all on its own.
Okay.
Some of the students might need tier-three supports, because it's very individualized, but this does look at what is the individual support the student needs, and so for some of those students who were having difficulty with coming to school, there might be some family barriers, um, this person can kind of help support with our school teams, and they collaborate, and then also with the community.
So they'll always, they'll be employed by?
North Cook.
North Cook, not, but we just tripped in for their salary, which is administered by North Cook, so they?
They're getting a grant, don't worry about it.
Okay. And then, but they, in terms of what they do, would they, um, because when we were talking about homebound, that's one of my, my.
That's okay.
But, so would that be like the REA, would that be improving the REA situation?
Not, well, it's a little bit different, it's similar, but it's, it's an established person, a point person, they have, and there is, is a big protocol that includes meetings and check-ins, so they're actually doing like some executive functioning coaching of the students, they're able to, which our staff can always do, they're able to, you would build it and actually go do, because one of the problems we've got is just getting kids to school sometimes, so it's sad, is, Kate, that's, that's a tier-three intervention, too.
And Terry, think about, it's always an add-on support, so we keep everything that we currently have in place, and we add on, it's just more adding, um, to support as you go up in the tiers.
Oh, okay.
We don't take any of that other stuff, so like, they might have already, they might have other stuff, and then you're gonna add this on top to try to help support, and then that'll take some of that, um, pressure for that individual support from our APSSs, so that they have somebody to share the load with.
I'd probably be more reluctant, Terry, except, except, Kevin, the ROE superintendent talked about this, he's able to share the data, and, of, of, this is, this is a concept improvement program that districts that, I think, maybe would have a more difficult time launching this, and us have, have proven to be successful, so it's gonna be, you know, probably being 20, 25 kids on someone's case load.
On each person, so 50 per building, so that's awesome.
But if we could have 50 kids, 50 kids who, even if half of them have better outcomes, and no, obviously we'll shoot for 100% of them to have better outcomes, but 50 kids that right now are really taking a lot of resources, and we can improve those outcomes, and we'll know, we'll be able to report back on how this goes.
Yeah, that'd be great. I mean, I, I can't think of that way to start, to be honest, with these students, I just have questions about it, so, and to follow up, what Ken said, let us know how it goes, and let us know if we like it, and, um, you know, we'd like to hear back on that.
I just have a couple, I have a couple questions.
Sure.
So, um, so it's two, two people that are, two people per school?
Hmm.
And are they, do they have offices at the school, or do they just profit, how does that work, are they full-time at our schools?
So, we would, they wouldn't start right away, because they have to obviously find a staff, but yes, they are full-time, like, they have flexible hours, like, they can be flexible, so if there was something where we're like getting a family later in the afternoon, there's some question over there, they will need some space in our buildings to be able to meet with our teams and meet with students, because our students will stay in their current classes, and then they will push and add that support as opposed to taking a student and sending them somewhere else.
Yeah, I think that's important, I do, to give them, yeah, space at school. So it's 113,000, but we will only be responsible for half that, the other half is a different brand.
113 is the half.
It is half.
So it's about 60,000 per building.
Oh, because it says district's maximum co-funded program, 50%, is 56,000 per building?
Yeah.
Yeah, so like the dis, the total district cost is 113.
Because we're doing two buildings.
Because we're doing two, yeah, okay. And then, like, there's a, and that's 50% of the total grant that we'll pay for the other.
Yes, and then with the potential that the fall of year, there may be no cost, up to no cost for the district.
Okay.
So it could be a cost, but it could not.
And we work with Meritouch, she, because this is also going to require a budget adjustment to add this, because it's kind of a late add, it's a late ask, so.
Okay. It's a good, great, great program, and it'll be, yeah, I just like.
It's been very successful, I think.
Well, far as I have a court hearing.
Yeah.
Next year, how it goes.
All right. Um, Kate, do you want to go over the NSCEO?
Oh, yes, that's great. So, and then NSCEO, this is a intergovernmental agreement, we approve, ask approval for every year, these are all students with unique, um, needs, and it has been determined through their IP that they require private day or public day school services, um, the cost is actually down from last year about 270,000, so we left students placed there this upcoming year, um, and this is how they receive their IP services. Any questions, have your questions?
Okay. Very nice. You take your role on both items on your, uh, in the tent. Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, next is the Parkridge Library Agreement, have a motion on item 11. Wait, Sean's not here, but this is, um.
This is one, this is one we've done, um, for many, many years, and what it does is it allows, uh, any student, um, because of where they live, don't have access to a public library, it allows them to get a card at the Parkridge Library, so we've done this for many years, we do a similar program, it's like, uh, we get a swap of students who grow, so, for example, if they don't have access to public libraries, they're, they're different.
Any questions? All right. Would you take your role? Kilber?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Have a motion on item 12, so we have a request? Let's tell them. Okay, thank you. This is work of accordia, we've done this, it'll be the third year or so, and, um, yeah, yeah. So, do you have any questions out there? Do you have points who actually?
And they get a discount, they get a just one.
Okay. No, any questions? You take your role. Lee?
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Kilber?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay, item 13, just counter, it's a couple things, we do have a special board meeting on August 10th, that will be to interview candidates to replace, uh, Paul Vasler for board membership, um.
Just about, or?
Not yet, we'll, we'll, the deadline is Wednesday, so we'll, we'll get whatever we have at that point, but, um, also on August 15th, we are doing a special board meeting, which includes board government to review training, I sent out a email to board members to get a chance, um, there is a survey, they've asked you, and, uh, if you have any, just take a look at that.
So, about how long?
You know, they budgeted three hours, I said, I know people are going to be doing it for three hours, so I think we have arranged for the trainer to be here at 5:30, we do a little business to do before, and I would, you know, hopefully we can meet up, how we have.
Do you recall many years ago, we did this?
We did.
Or they came?
It was 2015.
So.
Which one, Barb Tony?
It was Barb Tony.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It's not a medit, or?
You have, are you, are you, oh, I, okay, well, we'll just give you all the assignments that.
You can help her.
I'm pleasant for getting them all, okay, so, and we won't talk about you, but, okay, no, but, Jim, we'll, uh, you and I can talk, and I'll, you know, fill you in, and, um, uh, okay, is there anything else on?
Just September 13th, you know, the situation.
So we have the education meeting on September 13th, we also are going to build in a policy meeting, the policy may come first, and then that right after that, but they'll follow each other.
Okay.
We have a, um, important policy to go over. Okay. Or have that been?